One, two, three. Stephanie makes four. It is ten minutes after six. I will call to order the special meeting of the Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We do have a quorum present. Counting Ms. Cordewig over here to the side. And at this time, we're going to recess into closed session in accordance with Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. It's seven o'clock. We'll reconvene in open session. The special meeting of the Board of, Waco ISD Board of Trustees. We've been in closed session under Section 551.074 of the Texas Government Code. No action was taken. We'll move on to Item 4A, Presentation and Discussion of the Proposed Budget. Dr. Nelson, Ms. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. We have our Chief Financial Officer that'll take us through the documents that you have at your docket regarding the budget. One is a summary comparison of the proposed budget. It looks, it's sitting at your docket, it looks like this. And then the other document should be familiar with you. It's what we put in the paper regarding our proposed tax rate. So with that, I'll turn it over to our Chief Financial Officer, who's been working very hard, her and her team, on this presentation. Ms. Davis?
Yes. Those documents are supplemental to what you had in your packets that were sent out on Monday. And so we'll go through that and then talk a little bit about some of the changes that we've made for this year. Okay, so our first, we basically have had, for a number of years, several different budgets that we adopt, but the ones that make up our official budget is our general fund, our food service fund, and our debt service fund. And so, again, we've adopted those forever, but in the last few years, we have had some new programs that you'll also see as we go through the packet, that the board adopts because you are the budget authority over those funds, but that is the Challenge Academy, who also has a board that will adopt those funds, and then the Guama-Guaca, the Greater Waco Advanced Academies, and the Day School for the Deaf, for which we're the fiscal agent. So, again, Day School for the Deaf and Challenge Academy have their own board. They do adopt those budgets, but we're required to adopt the budgets as fiscal agent. Now, you will not see something separate for the Transformation Zone campuses, because those are part of your general fund. They're funded through our Foundation School Program. We are accounting for them in a separate fund number to keep it separate for audit purposes and for presentation to the Transformation Waco Board, but for your purposes of adopting the budget, they're just part of your general fund. So, looking at this, what you see is our proposed budget, that's highlighted in gray, and then the change from the prior year adopted. We looked over the last couple months at our property tax and the increases there and that impact on our state revenue and how that has decreased as our property taxes go up. So our total revenues we're looking at for next year are $145.5 million. That's up 4.6 million from last year, or what we project for this, and also about 5 million up from what we're projecting at the end of the year. And then for expenditures, it's $145,115,000, leaving $415,000 in the black, but that is the amount that we will be transferring to cover the greater Waco deficit for the advanced academies, particularly in Guama mostly. And then that will leave our fund balance. It's projected to be about 40.4 million at the end of this year, so that is a balanced budget, so it will leave the budget at 40.4 million for next year. Now, we'll talk a little bit about what's included in this budget, but remember, we did talk about at last month's meeting that we had taken some of our capital improvements projects out, and we'll be bringing those back in September. So moving forward, this is kind of what it looks like are, that are unassigned fund balances as a percent of the subsequent year's budget. You see, it goes down a little bit between 2017, 18. The dollar amount stays the same, but because the budget itself goes up, and this is a percent of that budget, so it, actually, the percentage of the unassigned fund balance goes down a little bit. So, right now, of course, this is just budget to budget for the 2019, 18, where it's more actual for the prior years, so hopefully, we will underspend that 2019, 18, 19, oh, 1918, 1819, a little bit, and it will end up a little bit higher than that. So, this is kind of what our assumptions are for budget purposes. It's based on an average daily attendance of 13,301, which is down about 80 students from this current year. It's based on an M&amp;O tax rate of $1.17 and an INS tax rate of 23,408, which is lower than the 24 cents that we had increased it to this past year to kind of make up the deficit we were having in that fund balance. It utilizes an approved net taxable value of $6.3 billion plus $241 million value of properties that are still under appeal as of the certified date. Includes pass-through and supplemental payments into the TIF of $5.9 million, which is an increase of about $434,000. It includes a 10% increase in employer contribution to health insurance. That's higher than what we talked about last month, and we can talk about that a little bit. I just, it cost an extra $212,000 over what we had been projecting. I squeezed a little more salary savings out, and I took out some of my contingency funds in order to do that. Anyway, I'm not real comfortable with the amount I took out of salary savings, but that is, is a 10% increase in the contribution. It includes a $1,000 for each teacher paid on the teacher schedule, which is teachers, nurses, and librarians, and then, which is an average increase of right at 2%, and then a 2% of the midpoint raise for auxiliary and paraprofessional employees, and a 1.5% of the midpoint raise for administrative professional employees. The total cost of that is 1.8 million. It incorporates salary savings of right at 1.2 million dollars. Again, that's a little bit more than we did last year. It includes projected rate increases, such as utilities, as well as known increases for contractual obligations like our tax collections and transportation. We did, oh, I said, in this next line, talks about the transportation increase. Normally, that would run us about 2.5% to 3% because it's part, it's based on our CPI. However, this year, we agreed to an increase because they were wanting to, we're having such a difficult time finding bus drivers, keeping bus drivers this past year, so we did increase the starting rate for bus drivers to 1550 an hour, so we agreed to a higher increase in the transportation contract. It also includes $530,000 in additional requests, which we'll look at in a minute, and then it includes 2.9 million in additional funding for the campuses in the Transformation Zone, of which two, about 2.6 million was budgeted directly for the additional zone expenditures, and another $129,000 supported through purchase optional services. Some, we had about that 558,000. We had an additional request, about 129,000 of that was paid from zone campuses. Again-
Sure, before you go to the next page, just a couple of questions.
Uh-huh.
The pass-through supplemental payments to TIF of 5.9, again, that's pass-through because almost all of that gets reimbursed back from the state, correct?
Correct. Most of that does.
Right, most of it does. And then the TIF, I'm sorry, the INS rate of .234, what, how big a reduction is that from last year?
It was 24 cents even last year, so a little over half a cent.
Okay. Thank you.
Got a question. Sure. If I'm correct, all of the bus drivers are all part-time, they receive no benefits? Am I correct?
That I do not know. I mean, that's part of their contract, you know that?
Say, say what now? They're not our employees.
Yeah, they're not our employees.
Okay.
So I can't-
Oh, okay, okay.
At one time, I know with the previous company, they actually did get benefits, so I don't know about Gold Star, but I would expect they are getting some sort of benefit because I don't think they could compete with the other districts and all if they don't.
Well, then, you saying the increase, that means we just giving more money to them to pay the bus drivers?
Yes. They have agreed to increase the starting sal, well, and a like increase, the same percentage will be applied to all their bus drivers.
Okay. And I guess, the other question I was going to ask, and probably don't have the answer, I know that they also cover Robinson, so we, we don't know if that's part of Robinson also, right?
Robinson is part of our inter-local agreement, and so they will, are going to comply with this increase as well. Always ask me that. Four and a half million. Maybe that's per, I don't, I never know that number. You'd think I would get that tattooed on my hand. Huh? Eight or nine million, something. Our payroll, I think, in the general fund, payroll costs are about 97 million, I think, in the, in the general fund, so, yes. Eight million. I think it's about-
Forty million dollars in our fund balance. Approximately.
Yeah.
Forty point three.
Forty point three, forty point four is projected at the end of the year. Okay, so- Again, we talked about our trend. We have final numbers as far as our average daily attendance for this past year. That, our ADA ended at 13.381, which was a 90.3% attendance. Our attendance was down a little bit from the last two years, about 0.2%. We'll look at that in, on these numbers. So, this is basically what we're taking for this coming year. We did have quite a loss in students. We talked about that before. Last year, in 2016, 17, we gained 194 kids. This year, we lost 288. As we talked about, a lot of that, most of that was at elementary and middle school, or all of that, because we actually gained some at high school. I think what we saw was when Harmony opened their secondary campus, it opened up a lot of slots at elementary, so we did lose some kids, and some of the grade levels we hadn't expected. So, we started, had at P Eames Day in late October, we had 14,823 students. We're projecting 14,722 for next year, but I am hoping to have, our attendance rate will be up a little bit again next year, and so I have budgeted, based the budget on 13,301 students, which is about 80 less than what it was this year. This is to look at our property values. We, the cert, certified compared to the preliminary numbers. Our certified values are, as I said before, $6.3 billion. That's 189 million down from what the preliminary numbers were. Now, that is a little bit lower than what the chief appraiser had projected when he gave us preliminary numbers. It's about a 1.1% variance, difference of 70 million from what he had thought they were going to be at, at that time. So it is, from the prior year, it is a 10.4% increase in values. Looking at how that impacts our tax revenue, now, I was using, when we, when I came in July with some of our early projections, I actually wasn't using the chief appraiser's numbers because it was a little bit different from, his, his numbers were a little higher than what we had been seeing, and so my difference was only a .09% variance from what we were projecting rather than 1.1, so we did a little bit better using our, our previous patterns. So, looking at that and that tax rate that we're talking about, the $1.17 on M&amp;O and the $23,408, we have an adjusted levy of, total levy of 84.5 million, 70.4 million in M&amp;O, and for, just 14.1 million in INS. Our rollback, that's a rollback rate, there is a reduction of, we're talking about that, half a cent, .592 cents. I upped the collection rate just a little bit. We've had real good collections the last few years. We've, in previous years, we've used more like 97.5, but the collections are really running closer to, like, as I said, that's 98.6 now. So, current tax collections, we're expecting total of 83.4 million, 69.4 in the M&amp;O and 13.9 in INS. Do, you see the delinquent tax collections and our penalties and interest that we also collect that are on top of those current tax collections? So, our total collections would be, will be about 84.9 million with that. Collections for the TIF are going to run about $7.1 million, with 5.9 of that in the general fund, and another million two in the INS fund. Now, we don't get reimbursed by the state for the TIF that's going out of the INS fund. We only get reimbursed by the state for the, the collections in the M&amp;O fund. So that's part of why, you're going to see, we're going to have a little bit of a negative impact on the fund balance, but it's probably only going to be about 35,000, but part of it is because our investment income and delinquent taxes and penalties and interest don't quite make up that loss in the TIF. So our estimated tax revenue, 77.7 million in total. Our budgeted tax revenue for last year was 69.6, so in total, we have an $8.1 million increase in property tax revenue. That is 6.6 million in the general fund and 1.5 million in our INS fund. But, just rewind here, that, as that local revenue goes up, that state revenue goes down. Not as much as it did when we were on target revenue, where they take it all back, but now that we're on formula, we do gain a little bit as long as we're, we don't become a gap district. So, this kind of shows what is happening with our state revenue. And one of the things I tried to show in this is how much we're getting in state revenue, and then what that local cost is. We talked about last time, for the first time, our local revenue is going to exceed our state revenue for the district. And one of the things that, that's important about this, because when we were going and working with the Transformation Zone campuses, and they're getting money that is in the special programs area, when we calculate, when they calculate tier-one funding for the district, which are those funds for, just not just our regular education block grant, but it funds gifted and talented programs, career in technology, special ed, and compensatory education, and bilingual programs, that's based on the total amount here, the total cost. So those shares for those programs are in this total cost. So, all of those programs have a sizable local share, that's over half of what we have to spend in those programs, is going to come from our local property tax revenue. So, our state share then, out of the 101 million that we have to spend in total cost for 2017, 18, it's 47 million of that, is 54 million is state share, and 47 million of it was our share. For 1819, we're estimating that goes down to 99.4 million. 51 million of it is our share, and 48.2 million is the state share. Now, that revenue didn't go down as much as we would have seen, considering our property tax increase, and that is because if you come down here more towards the middle of the page, it shows that 2.9 million that we earned on the charter school basic allotment or adjusted allotment for the campuses that are in the Transformation Zone. So, this additional funding offset the loss we would normally have in our state revenue, but it goes to the Transformation Zone campuses. So we come down, and we have our other payments. We are still getting 300, we are no longer getting existing debt allotment or instructional facilities allotment, because we are now too rich to get either of those allotments, but we are getting some additional aid that was new last year for, that they put in place when the, when they increased the homestead exemption. So we get about $372,000 there, and I have transferred that, or I am using that in the debt service fund to kind of offset that TIF money that comes out of there. So this, again, as we were talking about, is the revenue trend by funding source. You can see the 2015, 16 was where our state funding moved off target revenue and went, shifted back to formula, and with, as I said, with a coinciding rise in property values. So you see now, we have made that shift from having, getting more money in our state revenue compared to local, to we're now generating more out of our local property taxes. Looking at this, this is just the general fund. Right at 50% of our revenue now comes from local and intermediate sources, 47.5% from state programs, and 2.5% from federal programs, mostly indirect cost revenue. This is the total revenue here, local property tax revenue. Then our other local revenues, you see, 8.1 million there. A lot of that is in, the, part of that is, is investment income, of course, and then that's auxiliary services, our after-school programs, our tuition from our regular day program. Those are all a part of that other local revenue that you see there. Then we have our state foundation school program of 63.1 million for this year, and TRS on behalf, about 5.7 million. That actually is going down because I actually over-budgeted it this past year a little bit, so it's showing a little bit lower than it has been. And then our federal program revenue of 3.6 million. We are losing a little bit of indirect cost for food service, because they went on to the different methodology for reimbursement, and it had some impact on our indirect costs that we were able to get from the food service program. So the increase in revenues over 1718 is a million six, and mostly due to that property tax increase, and then, and the additional state revenue that's going into the Transformation Zone. So these are the additional programs include, program costs included in the budget. We had, we had very reasonable additional requests this year. Sometimes they are a little crazy, but this year, we had some very reasonable requests, so we were able to fund most everything that was requested. So television equipment for live broadcast, a contract for our external assessment and internal audit, some additional training costs in the Avid program, and then we are expanding our dyslexia program, and we'll kind of look at that in a minute, but we bought some required, state mandated screening software to conduct that. And then, due to the realignment, there is some additional athletic cost, particularly in travel, and then we're funding some helmet and shoulder pad replacements. And we talked about, there was, last, this year, we bought new band uniforms for Waco High. The university has a much larger band than Waco High does, so it's going to cost us about $40,000 more for those uniforms, and we'll replace those uniforms for this year. And then some, Brazos High School is funded with comp ed funds, and they have, they do not have the ability to do some field trips and those kinds of things with that funding source, so they had asked for some additional supplemental funds to, so they could do a little, a few field trips, admission costs, pay for refreshments at events and all. So that's $3,000. Then we had some contract continuations. Achieve 3,000 this past year was paid from our instructional materials allotment, some additional funding we had there. That was picked up by the general fund this year, and it's 372,000. We did get a new website management system, that's about $50,000 a year, and then our K-12 insights, Let's Talk, that's our online communication system from our webpage, it was 37,000. So those contracts are going to continue into this next year. We also added some instructional positions, and I show here how much of that through the charter school funding, the optional purchase services, they did pick up a share of some of these new positions. We added five dyslexia specialists, bringing the total from 15 to 20. That was a total cost to the, to the district of 284,000. 63,000 of that was picked up through purchased optional services. We added one additional gifted and talented teacher at elementary. Again, the Transformation Zone picked up 10,000 there. Bilingual intervention support, those positions, we had two positions that were cut, or a position, no, two positions, I think, that were cut because of the loss in federal funds, and so we put those back in, and the zone picked up 42,000 of that. And then additional support for the response to instruction plan development, and again, the zone picked up a little bit of that cost. So we were able, while improving district programs and offering more services, to help utilize some of those funds that came, those additional funds that came with the Transformation Zone to help cover some of those costs. So this is the cost of our salary increase. We talked about it before, 1.5% for administrative and professional, 2% for everyone else, including the average teacher, increase of 2%, which is $1,000 per person. The total cost of that was 1.8 million, and we've got 1 point, almost 1.5 of that is in the general fund. Then I show you the savings. In some cases, the savings actually is more than the salary increase, because we do have turnover during the year when positions aren't filled. So this is basically what we're looking at, that we took for savings in those positions. We took a million two in total savings, and right at a million dollars is in the general This is just a graphic of how much we have in each of the functional areas. As you can see, instruction runs right at 54% for the district, and then you see, some of the other large ones, whether you plant maintenance in operation, is right at 11% and so on, but that's just for, I'll let you guys look at that. Okay. Child nutrition fund. We have a rather sizable fund balance in the child- We have a rather sizable fund balance in the child nutrition fund. I actually have been on Cliff to spend some money this year for equipment. We've got some purchase orders going out for equipment. So, I'm projecting that a lot of that's going to get spent because the TDA is not going to be happy with us with, yes?
Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. On page seventeen, this is my understanding, eleven point one percent. Which of the, which of the functions is that?
Plant maintenance and operations.
Six point six percent.
School leadership.
Four point seven.
Which one is that? Student transportation. Whoops. Okay, so, anyway, so, we've done really well. We've come a long ways in our food service funds from the, being nine hundred thousand dollars in the red. Cliff has done a really good job of maintaining those costs. He did have quite a few, a lot of salary savings this past year from vacancies. And I think one of the things you'll see with our compensation plan is to upgrade some of our managers to help keep some people. We've been losing, unable to keep cafeteria managers. So, that's one of the things we're looking at doing. So, the budget here is, is balanced. We're looking at about six hundred and sixty-six thousand in local and intermediate source revenue. And then, fifty-five thousand is some money that we get from the state. Then, nine point four million in our federal program revenue. Now, we may see a shift. We did get approved night before last for that community eligibility program. And so, that we might see some shift from the local revenue to the federal revenue as that is, comes into play. And then, ten point one million for our total expenditures. We are looking at a projected actual fund balance. Like I said, we started out the year with about two point two million dollars in fund balance. And so, we're looking at, if we spend some of that down with this equipment, about one point nine million. And that would be going forward and that's an eighteen point six percent in fund balance. Debt service fund, again, this is based on that twenty-three four oh eight tax rate. We have been not collecting, we, that was, we've been transferring money from the general fund into the debt service fund over the past few years to help offset the deficit that, because we had lowered the tax rate when we did the TRE. We had a healthy fund balance there, but we did transfer some money. This year, we did not transfer any, we're not going to transfer. This eight hundred and forty-two thousand that you see here, that is going to be the expenditures over revenues, we're not going to do a transfer from the general fund this year. We're going to let that amount draw down the fund balance because with the tax rate that we've set going forward, we should not need to do that again. We're looking at about a thirty-seven thousand dollar expenditures over revenues for next year, which we can easily cover. And if interest rates still keep going up, we might actually be in the black in our debt service fund. But, that is at right at twenty-five percent, twenty-five point seven percent fund balance. This is, this is basically the official budget, as I said, a hundred and forty-five mil, point one million in the general fund. Child nutrition is ten point two million and our debt service is fourteen point seven million. The other funds that you will adopt on the, or you will be asked to adopt on the last meeting in August will be the Greater Waco Advanced Academies. They are looking much better than they have this last few years. And Donna McKethan has promised me that these kids are real. We did have a bit of a increase for, we went from a thirty-five hundred dollar a year tuition to thirty-eight hundred for, in our tuition rate for the both academies. And then, our, it looks like right now our enrollments are up for both academies. So, hopefully, we will be able to make this revenue. We're showing right now, one point seven proposed revenues compared to about one point four this past year. And then, expenditures, two point one million, which is a little bit lower than the budget was last year of two point three million, but a little bit more than what we ended up spending, which was right at two million dollars. That, of course, we will, we have shown in the general fund that will be transferred over there and for this coming year. Then, yes?
In your opinion, it seems like one of two possible things going on there. One is just the state is not funding career and technology efforts at what they actually cost, or our model is just a very costly one, or we just don't quite have the economies of scale because of the participation rate.
I think it's probably a combin, combination of the other two because most people will tell you, well, the people that are in special ed and bilingual and all this will tell you that Kate's funded very nicely. So, I, I do think-
Everybody else has always got plenty of money.
That's right, that's right. You know, the Kate people will tell you that they're not funded well, but everybody else tells you they're funded very well. I, I do not really think with Kate, it's as much a funding issue from the state because I think of all the programs, they probably are most equitably funded. Maybe that and comp ed, certainly much more so than special ed is. That said, I do think it's a combination of the other two things. I think it's sort of economies of scale over there, having the two separate buildings, you know, covering building costs and over, on the two programs. And it, with the two separate buildings, you end up with some additional costs, clerical support, a director or dean of instruction at each site. So, I think that's a little bit of it. And then, I think this market, we knew kind of going in that our market was smaller than some of the models we were looking at at the time because they were in bigger, bigger markets. And we're able to draw, I think, a larger enrollment than we have in the Waco market. So, I think it's a combination of those two things. And then, I think the other districts just really don't want to have to pay. No, I'm just kidding.
We want it for-
You never want to give your money away.
Well, yeah, no, I understand. That's, okay, well, and it's-
Because you understand that Kate weighs-
I don't, I don't need things to be perfect now. I just need hope for the future, that eventually we plane out.
Well, these are expensive programs. Guam particularly is an expensive program. And I think sometimes people are looking at them and thinking that, you know, you get this certain weight on your career techno, technology programs. But, that, that weight, even though the hour, the contact hours might be greater for this program, it might be a three rather than a, just a one-hour course, like a business course. But, the weight's the same. And so, you get waited for that same hour of instruction for a business class that might have twenty-four kids in the classroom as you do for this, each hour of welding class that might only have fifteen classes, kids in a classroom. So, I think that's part of it. You kind of look at the average of what's, what we get for Kate. And certainly, tho, the money we're getting for those business classes has to support these expensive programs like welding.
You did say this year, you're projecting higher enrollment in both programs. And the contribution from the other districts has gone up three hundred dollars per pupil.
Yes.
Do these numbers reflect that expectation?
Yes.
Okay.
Who's expectations? They do. They do. I can guarantee you that the price increase is there because we've already brought that to the board and that's what we're going to be billing on. Now, we have had, you know, in recent, all these years, we have, sometimes the estimate of enrollment is a little high. Now, I have brought that down. I always bring down what they tell me is going to be, so.
Does the price impacted demand at all? Can you tell that?
I don't think so. From what they're saying right now, no. That we're get, our enrollments are actually up, so I don't think so.
From, from the other school districts?
No, several school districts, if I may, Mr. President. Several school districts in the Greater Waco area have shown their lack of commitment to this program well before the price increase. La Vega built their own program, Conley built their own program. So, no, it's, it's not the vision that was an outstanding vision from the onset. Having said that, the Waco Independent School District is firmly committed to growing Guam through Waco ISD students.
Okay, good.
And in terms of-
But, no, it's not because they're not going to stop sending them because of the three hundred dollar increase. They already stopped.
Some, not all.
Right, that's true.
Romans up, but that's because she lowered it.
I, no, I lowered their estimates.
Their estimate, right.
I, I'm always a little more conservative with the number than they are, than Donna is.
Point we'll take.
And last year was?
Six hundred and seventy.
Six, six seventy and we're down to four fifteen, so.
Yeah.
Okey-dokey.
And see, as you can see, I even did lower it last year. And the revenues we had projected at one point six and ended up at one point three million. So, it was quite a bit lower than what we had thought. Challenge Academy is always a challenge. This one, I, I almost give up trying to project where we're going to be because one year the participation's way up, the next year it's way down. And it's just, it's very difficult to project this one. So, we originally, two thousand sixteen seventeen, we are making money hand over fist at Challenge Academy because of participation being up. I actually gave money back during the summer. I did refund of tuition because we keep it pretty low. We don't keep a large fund balance over there. And so, then last year, the participation just went away, just evaporated. So, we didn't have, so, I actually had to go in this summer and do an assessment to all the districts to charge them the additional funds to make it through the rest of the year. So, like I said, I kind of given up on, on projecting where Challenge Academy is going to be from one year to the next. I think it sort of depends on what offenses districts are sending kids over there for. And anyway, so, this- Yes, but the, unfortunately, in a program this small, the costs don't really go down as participation goes down. So, it goes from a maybe ten thousand to fifteen thousand dollar charge, but anyway. Okay, so, la, the year before, we, and we had seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of expenditures. Like I said, lots of participation. So, we added some staff this past year. Expenditures were budgeted at nine hundred and thirty-three thousand dollars. Ended up not filling at least one of the positions because, or probably a couple of the aides ended up. One was vacant all year, the other one became vacant, we didn't fill it. And so, the actual expenditures ended up about eight hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars because, again, the participation was down. So, we have increased the tuition rate for Challenge back to what it was in the sixteen seventeen school year because I lowered it for this past year. So, we're just back to where we were in sixteen seventeen. Our proposed budget, we do have some savings on our general fund side there in function ninety-five. As we look, as you look at the, the final schedule by function, you'll see that this is down. But, eight hundred and seventy-seven thousand in revenues and expenditures is what is proposed for next year compared to the nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand that we had for revenues in the original budget this year. Our unearned revenue at the beginning of the year was about twenty-five thousand dollars. And so, I'm hoping that that stays right at twenty-five thousand through next year. And our final one is our regional day school for the deaf. That program has grown considerably over the last few years. We do have a lot of increased participation. We've had more districts join our co-op for the day school for the deaf. And so, those revenues and expenditures are both up. We actually amended it up during the year because participation had increased enough during this school year that we brought amendments to the board a couple of times, I think, increasing the revenue and with offsetting expenditures. That budget was seven hundred and forty-three thousand. This past year, it's going to be right at a million dollars, million twenty-seven thousand for this coming year. And their unearned revenue at the end of the year, fund balances right at seventy thousand dollars. That is the budgets that we have that will be presented to you on the twenty-third. We will have the public meeting at the beginning of that meeting to discuss the proposed budget and tax rate. And then, that same night, we will have the adoption of both. Also, I have put in your pack, because I did not have this back from the tax office in time to go in your, your budget, or your board packet on Monday night to be posted. But, this is, you have the notice from the tax office. It has all the required information. You can see kind of down towards the bottom here, our average residence. The value of our average residence in Waco has gone from a hundred and sixteen thousand to a hundred and thirty-three thousand this past year. And the average taxable value from eighty-four thousand to almost ninety-six thousand dollars. The increase in taxes, and we are actually lowering the tax rate just a little bit, but the increase in taxes is, on the average taxpayer, is a hundred and fifty-two dollars a year, which is due all to the increase in values. Then, the last page that you have in there is just the posting that we will put into, onto our webpage in compliance with legal requirements. At the very bottom down there, you see object code sixty-four ninety-one. This is a new object code that was put in place under legislative act, TEA created this object code because of some legislative action in the last session that we are required to put on this proposed budget the cost of our statutorily required public notices. So, when we have to buy an ad in the Waco Trib for some statutorily required notice, then this is the cost of that. We budgeted seventy-eight hundred dollars. I went ahead and calculated, ran it for this year to see what we spent so far. And that was five thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars.
Chill.
It will be posted as required by law.
Just so I'm clear then, the rate that we're being asked to pass on the twenty-third will be almost six tenths of a penny less than the current rate, correct? All right. And then, on the state revenue, page ten of the PowerPoint, because of the increase in property values, the revenue from the state this year compared to last will be two point nine four million dollars less, correct?
Correct.
And if we hadn't done the transformation zone, it would have been almost five point eight million dollars less.
Correct.
So, we're getting two point nine through the transformation zone. If we hadn't done that, our state revenues would be down about six million where the local revenue was up six million.
That is correct.
Okay, just to make sure I understood that. Other questions? All right, and then we'll adopt the notice on the next agenda item. Any other questions on the report? All right, we'll move on to item five A, which is- All right, we'll move on to item 5A, which is approval of the notice of public meeting. Are there any questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion. Thank you, Ms. Manning. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Portawag. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to item 5B, which is discussion of possible action to approve the employee compensation plan and the district's contribution for employee health insurance. Dr. Nelson?
Thank you, Mr. President. According to district policy DEA Local, I'm expected to recommend to the board pay structures in a compensation plan for district employees. I'm also required to recommend to the board an amount for employee pay increases as consideration of part of the annual budget. I just want to say for the record that you have the proposed increases. They were mentioned in Ms. Davis's presentation clearly on page 20, page 16 of her presentation, which is 21 in her notebook. It's also reiterated in the background information beginning on page 31 of the presentation. It includes for the public interest, 1.5% for administration, 2% for auxiliary professional, employees, 2% for paraprofessional aides, 2% for support paraprofessionals. And then for teachers, the pay schedule includes an average increase of 2%. The proposed teacher pay scale intervals between each step vary from $300 to $700 depending on a teacher's experience. The proposed 2018, 2019 teacher pay schedule is attached to the information for you to consider. Our human resources office has made sure that they provided documentation to show that we are still competitive with our local school districts that are trying to recruit, attract, and retain talent. In the area of health insurance, we are recommending an increase in the district contribution for health insurance and pharmacy benefits. The district is proposing the district contribution increase from $367.50 per employee per month to $404.25 per employee per month. For the record, the district's contribution for health insurance, we consider it to be an overall part of the employee compensation package, which in this case is an additional $4,851 of benefit for our employees. Now, the last thing I'd like to say and really allow Mrs. Boteo to take us through a presentation is I support what we're recommending. It's my recommendation. We really have tried to be mindful of our employees who may see a possible increase in compensation, but yet we're having to, as a school district, really consider skyrocketing health insurance costs. And so that's one of the reasons why you see the adjustment to $404 is to really try and be sensitive to our employees' situation. We have to consider compensation and rising insurance costs. Last thing I will say is, I'm very uncomfortable with the assumption that every year there's going to be a raise. Number one, our data does not support that. Number two, you know, one of the ways you prepare for a rainy day is to board up your windows. And so, to hunker down and just have a freeze is not what I'm recommending today. And I know it would not be well received, but just for the record, let me be emphatically clear that the assumption of an increase in compensation is, I really just give credit to the finance department because that's, that's not the way you organize a budget. And it's definitely not tied to the accountability and responsibilities that we hold near and dear to student outcomes. But having said that, I've put in the record what our recommendations are for compensation and for health insurance, and we recommend approval. Ms. Boteo, you'd like to take us through your presentation?
Sure, I'll be happy to. So, board members, you have a booklet in front of you, and where you see the tab, it says Agenda and Presentation. If you've turned the page past the agenda, you'll see a copy of the board, I'm sorry, the PowerPoint presentation. As Dr. Nelson and Ms. Davis mentioned, the administration is recommending an average 2% increase to the teacher pay scale. And you'll see what the, the annual salary amount would be for teachers depending on their years of experience as a teacher on that slide too. And I'm going to kind of take this, go through this pretty quickly, so feel free to stop me if you have any questions. I'll be happy to answer those. And again, as Dr. Nelson mentioned, for the auxiliary and the paraprofessional staff, we are recommending a 2% of the midpoint of the assigned pay grade. And for the professional and administrative staff, we are recommending a 1.5% of the midpoint. I will say that in an effort to just really maintain the integrity of each pay schedule, we did make some adjustments to some of the, the pay schedules just to stay competitive at the entry level of some of those positions.
When you say that, are you talking about you've changed the pay grade or you changed the minimum within a pay grade?
The minimum and mid, and yeah, and so the mid and max also shift a little bit when you do that. So, for an example, if you want to go ahead and turn to slide 5. The cafeteria staff, they are currently on a 101 pay grade. And the midpoint of that 101 pay grade this year is 1250. Next year, we're proposing it's going to be 1254. And with the 2% increase of that midpoint, our custodial cafeteria staff who are on that pay grade would get about a 25 cents per hour increase. That would be about $20.06 per check, about $481 per year. So, that's, I just wanted to kind of give you that as an example. As Cheryl Davis mentioned earlier, we wanted to do something to attract and retain cafeteria managers. So, we did move our cafeteria managers up one level. And along with the cafeteria managers, the custodians, the head custodians also moved up one level. So, we feel that that will help our situation where we are struggling to keep some leaders in those positions. Some other positions that fall under the auxiliary pay schedule, the general maintenance workers, groundskeepers, electricians, plumbers, HVAC techs, your police officers, your peace officers, and your security guards. There is a tab in your book that has an example of, not an example, the actual pay schedule. So, you can see other positions that fall under various pay grades and what those min, mid, and max amounts are. For the paraprofessionals, again, there was a slight adjustment in the mid, in the min, min, mid, and maximum amount. I gave you an example of the instructional aides. We have various aides, not just instructional. We have behavior support, but they're all on the same pay grade. They're on the 103 pay grade. And I'm now speaking from slide 7. The midpoint, the proposed midpoint would be 620 per hour. And 2% of that midpoint would be about .324 cents per hour. And that would be about an annual increase of about $484.70. I think it's different in your book, but if you include that .324, that 4 does make a difference. And again, we adjusted that starting rate for the aides from 1277, that's with zero years of experience, to now 1296 per hour. Some other positions that fall under the paraprofessional occupational groups are secretaries, administrative assistants, clerks, registrars, parent, parent campus liaisons, technology technicians, and LVNs. And again, there is a tab that's marked paraprofessional pay schedule, and you're more than welcome to review that as well. I also included, and you'll see that in there, some TASB survey, survey reports where you can see what other districts are paying and basically in our area. The proposed professional and administrative pay schedule is a 1.5% of the midpoint. And I gave you an example of an instructional specialist. They are currently on a 102 pay grade. The midpoint, their daily, their daily rate is 291.81, that's the midpoint amount. And so with a 1.5 increase on the midpoint, that would be an additional $4.37 per day. And some other examples of staff that fall on that pay schedule are content specialists, coordinators, directors, and assistant superintendents. For the stipends, we did not make any changes to the critical shortage area stipends or the athletic stipends. We still remain pretty competitive there compared to other districts. But we did make an adjustment to the lead PE teacher stipend. We are recommending that move from $1,000 a year to $2,000 a year. We did not make any changes to our current substitute pay schedule. According to the reports from TASB, we still remain competitive in that area as well. We are also one of the few districts that offer differential pay. So, if you have a substitute that works on a Friday, they get an additional $5 on their daily rate. They also get an additional $10 after working 30 consecutive days, and then another additional $10 after working 60 days. So, that has been very helpful in our district. Our fill rate has increased because of some of those changes we made. And as far as the temporary staff and extra duty rate schedule, again, we just made some adjustments to the cafeteria custodial temps because we typically will hire in the cafeteria custodials as temp employees. And then after so many days, if they do well on the job, then we offer them a full-time position. So, that entry rate was $9, and it is increasing to $9.20. And if they do well and they're promoted to a permanent position, then they're, they would make $10.03. And then we also, as part of the compensation plan, we are recommending the district contribution increase from $367.50 per employee per month to $404.25 per employee per month. And this is an annual benefit of about $4,851. I did provide, and if you want to flip to the health insurance district contribution tab, you will see other employers, mainly school districts, but we also included McLennan County and the city of Waco to show you what they are contributing towards the employer contribution for health insurance as well. We are still working on a few plans that have been recommended to us by our consultant. And we will be bringing a presentation later this month on the district's recommendation for that. One thing that we did hear back from our employees, we had an insurance committee meeting last week. And there are some things that we can change to help control cost. And one of our plans that's really taken a hit, that's Plan 3, we call it our Cadillac Plan. One is that we could consider having a narrow network that that would knock one big provider out. And our employees were pretty adamant that they wanted to keep both Providence and Baylor Scott &amp; White as an option for in-network. So, I'll be happy, there's additional information, and there's a packet in your, behind that tab, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you might have. And as Dr. Nelson said, the administration is recommending the compensation plan as presented.
Elaine, I'm going to open it up to questions, but before I do, I just want to compliment you in putting this together the last several years. And we used to get just sort of the teacher scale summary, and this really helps show the complexity of the different pay scales for the different positions, and you do a great job laying it out. And I also want to compliment you and Cheryl on finding the money to increase the employer contribution for health insurance. I mean, it looks like, although less than half of our employees are on employee-only Plan 1, that it looks like we'll be able to maintain that at either free or a de minimis contribution from the employee. And I want to thank y'all for working hard to find those extra dollars to address the concern Dr. Nelson raised last month. Other questions, comments from the board? Please, Ms. Sykes.
Elaine, on this comparison chart, page 14, it goes back to the 2016, 17 school year reflecting the district contribution. Is it implied in this that the district contribution is covering 100% of the premium?
For the other districts, you mean?
Yes.
No.
Okay. So, there is some, in some cases, we're not, we haven't identified that, that the district is making a contribution, but there's also a portion of the premium that would be covered by the employees.
That's correct.
Okay.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Know what that, what that level is for any given district?
Yeah, well, I did give you some information. Again, this is kind of still a work in progress because we still really haven't made a decision on what we're going to recommend as far as what plan we're going to go with. But on that spreadsheet, you'll see in beige, the TRS Active Care. And you'll also notice that a majority of the districts that are listed on that district contribution are with the TRS Active Care. So, if you have a district that is contributing 225, which is required by state, that's the minimum that a district has to contribute. And you look at, for example, the TRS Active Care High Deductible Plan where that premium is 367, then an employee at that district would be paying the difference, correct?
Every month.
Every month, yes.
Do you know whether the city and county pick up 100% of the employee? I know their number's considerably higher than the school districts are paying. I was just curious what that was.
Lead is about $25. I meant they've just got the two plans.
Yeah, I think, I know that they've changed their plans recently, so I know at one point in time, they were. I believe they may have an option that's free for employees. I'm not really sure.
Other questions from the board? Then I will entertain a motion to approve the employee compensation plan and district contribution for health insurance. Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Dupree.
I think I had a phrase, what I want to, what I want to say. I think we historically have viewed it as very important, I guess, to our employees that we cover 100% of at least one of our health insurance plans. And on the face of it, possibly that seems generous, but arguably, that's getting in the way of them having increased health insurance means we can't spend as much money on raises. And I feel like we're sort of just putting a veil over health insurance costs for employees so that they're really not focused on how much that stuff is. And to what end, I'm not sure. I don't know why we think it's important for us to do that. What I'd rather see us do, I mean, I get, I, I don't want to affect, I don't want to suddenly drop everybody's take on pay by making them share, but I would rather give them a raise and then have them pick up 30, 40% of their health insurance premiums so that it evens out. I mean, is there, is there a philosophical problem with everybody, I mean, with approaching it from that? Because I, who are we trying to fool?
I will say, no, and I will say, when you look at the breakdown of the employees, there are not a lot of folks, I mean, it's less than 50% of the employees that are on that Plan 1. So, most of them are contributing, they're buying up, and they are paying something out of pocket. And I think that's significant that they, we, they are paying. are paying, most of them are paying something.
Yeah, there, there is another form in there that.
And I, but even for those that are, I'm.
I think it's a legitimate.
I think it's okay at some point for us to let go of that. I don't think there's any magic.
We haven't said there, there's gonna be a free plan yet.
Right.
Okay? There is a PPO option, that's an in-network option, and if we go with that plan, there will no longer be a free plan for.
What I would like to say to you is that that's okay. I don't, it's not a failure on your part for us to share some of those costs with employees. Now, and I'm.
No, and I think that's a fair discussion.
That's all right, and I think it's, but I just, I.
I think in talking with the Teachers Association and what Dr. Nelson was bringing up last month, there is a concern that if you do that at one time, you may have folks actually taking home less money this year than they did last year because you're passing all that on, right.
I don't want that to happen.
And I just make sure that's not what you're saying, you're saying, look at it over time, but.
What I want is to elevate the consciousness on the part of the American public about how much we're spending on healthcare, and I.
You know, and I, that's.
That's really my concern, and I'm not.
That's one reason why we went self-insured, because we needed to make.
I don't think it changes any of your employees' experience. I know it has changed yours dramatically, and, but I don't know that if you are on the benefits end, I mean, if you, if you are an employee of the district, that's pretty opaque. You can't tell the difference between the, y'all set up a fund that pays employees' healthcare claims, you can't, they can't tell the difference between you and a health insur, and a health insurance company, really.
Right.
I mean, unless you're somehow communicating that to them, or.
Yeah, there, there is more education, and there, being that we now are self-funded, we can look at various areas where we need to be educating more to our employees, or.
Until it comes out of their check, I don't think they care. And I, and I'm, that's being cynical on my part, but let's not say that that's true for all of them or everybody.
And I, I agree with you, I, I mean, I do agree with you, but I, I don't, I, I want you to understand, it's not just about it coming out of their check, it's also plan design changes where their deductible's gonna go up, where their out-of-pocket maximum's gonna go up, where their copay could go up, where they may not be able to go to a doctor that they used to be able, so there are some other barriers that they're gonna have to face where they used to.
You're making the plan less generous, and that, and that's okay, and I.
I mean, you have to do what, you know, you have to do to be able to continue to offer, you know, a, a plan that is acceptable, I guess, and affordable.
Your points, Will, take it.
Yes, it is.
I don't disagree with any of that, I would just like to, I guess, relieve your conscience of the need.
I'm, I'm with you, Mr. Dupuy, I've been saying that for the last two decades, that, you know, at some point in time, we're going to get to a point where we're not gonna be able to offer a free plan.
We don't unless we do it.
Yeah. And we may not, you know, it may be coming, we'll, we'll know at the end of the month.
All right, but just if it happens.
It happens.
And I think, I think philosophically.
It's not a failure on your part.
Yeah, thank you.
Right. No, I agree, and I think.
I don't want you to take it that way.
I think historically, and Mr. Sykes can probably speak to this, the thought was, for these districts that are paying two hundred and twenty dollars a month, and then the employees having to pay a hundred and fifty out of their pocket for health insurance, that there's an additional benefit there on the recruiting end, but I also think a lot of folks are looking at base salary number, which is what you're talking about, not necessarily the additional forty-eight fifty-one we're paying towards their health insurance. I don't know that's getting us a lot of recruiting benefit, and in the long run. I think looking at adjusting that and having the employees pick up some of that, something as a matter of course, we're gonna have to do at some point. Alan, anything you wanted to add?
Yes, please. Elaine, would you run through again, I wanna look at the Plan One deductible and the out-of-pocket? The out-of-pocket is going up from current sixty-three fifty to seventy-nine hundred, and that's per family?
Yes.
That's a maximum.
That's, that's per individual.
Per individual?
Individual, yes. And it's double for a family.
Okay, so then regarding the deductible, is, remind me, it's still a four thousand dollar deductible, but is that the first dollar, or is that comprehend co-pays?
No, that's the first dollar, that's.
It is?
They have to, yeah.
Okay.
After the four thousand dollars met, then the plan kicks in.
Kicks in.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yes.
Just part of the reason your department's gotta discourage folks from doing Plan One.
Yeah, and as you can see from the information I gave you, I mean, you, you do have some of those employees, you know, even though they don't take home a lot of money, they still choose to get a plan that works for them.
Thank you for curbing.
You're welcome.
Other questions, comments from the board? And we'll get the actual different options on the health insurance plan next month.
That's correct. No, this month and later this month.
Later this month, you're correct. All right, anything you wanted to add, Dr. Nelson?
No, we recommend approval as presented.
Did we vote yet on that? Do you interrupt it? Carrie had additional questions, correct?
Right.
Is that Maria Arques? We got a motion?
We don't have a motion yet. All right, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the employee compensation plan and the district contribution for health insurance.
So moved.
Thank you, Alan. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordaway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Lot of employees out there who were nervous for a second, thinking they weren't gonna get paid this year.
We're looking for better solutions.
All right, we'll move on to item C, which is approve district teaching permit for selected candidates on non-core CTE courses. Do you have anything to add to what's in the packet?
No, just recommend approval as presented. For the record, it's Jocelyn West, which will be a health science teacher at Guaca.
Any questions or comments? And I'll entertain a motion.
Move that we accept the administration's recommendation. Are you waving?
She doesn't have to have, she didn't have a degree.
No, certification, she, she has.
Excuse me, she has.
That she's a registered nurse, and she'll be teaching health science.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy, is there a second?
Sir.
Thank you, Ms. Manning, any other questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion carries. Item D is approve additional T-test appraisers, is there anything the administration wanted to add to what's in the packet?
No, sir, recommend approval as presented.
Any questions? I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Dupuy, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Cordaway. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Discussion, possible action to approve real property transfers. I know this was discussed in closed sessions, my understanding, council's gonna go back and meet with the city and county, and we'll take this up in two weeks, is that everybody's understanding?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Then we're down to item six, announcements, Mr. DeBeere?
Thank you, Mr. President. Just three brief announcements this evening. The first is to echo something that Ms. Davis reported earlier, which is, in June, you authorized the administration and the Child Nutrition Services Department to submit an application for the community eligibility provision. We learned this week that that was approved. That means that instead of qualifying students for free meals on an individual basis, we're able to qualify the entire district so that individual students don't have to submit those applications, and every enrolled student will receive free meals this year. We think that's a significant development, and we're excited about what that means for our students. Then just to remind you, on August eleventh, we have our incredible Family Fest events happening from nine to twelve at University High School and Waco High School. Students are able to pick up free backpacks with school supplies. The following Saturday on August eighteenth, from nine to eleven a.m., we have our Special Services Programs Fair and our Special Education. Early childhood gifted and talented and bilingual teens will be there to meet with parents and talk about their individual students' needs as we head into the new school year. And at both of those events, we're grateful to have the support of a wide and diverse group of community partners who are stepping up to support our students in a multitude of ways and really underscore the enthusiasm and commitment that we heard from the community last year when Dr. Nelson called for the community to step up and, and join us in taking ownership of our schools and our students' success. Thank you.
Also, wanted to be sure, I think this is the last time we will meet prior to the first day of school, so wanted to encourage our public to heed school's zone warnings, and our police department will be collaborating with the city of Waco and McLennan County sheriffs to really send a message throughout our streets that it's time to slow back down, and, and school will be back in session in less than three weeks. Also believe that, I just personally would like to thank our Office of Human Resources under the direction of Mrs. Boteo, Ms. Flegging, Ms. Boyet, they put in a lot of time and effort in developing our compensation plan and understanding all of the intricacies of health insurance and being a self-insured model and how it impacts us, and without question, Ms. Davis and her team, I'll save those kudos for next board meeting after we finish approving the budget, but really, both of these departments deserve recognition for their outstanding leadership in late hours preparing this presentation for our elected officials, so I wanted to say thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nelson. Christie, could you also email the board about available dates on Saturdays where they could meet? Like, we've got a training we were gonna do this Saturday, we had a board member who couldn't be there, and if we could just get that, so we can get that set up.
Mr. President.
So we're not meeting this Saturday.
And, and, and our next meeting is not till the twenty-third also, am I correct with that?
Right, which I believe is trust.
That's the sixteen.
Yeah, the sixteen.
We have a workshop on the sixteen.
Okay, that's, all right, that's why I want to make sure, the sixteenth.
We're back on the regular schedule.
Back on the regular schedule. And also, don't forget the church on the bridge on the nineteenth.
Correct. Very good.
We had a great presentation at Columbus Avenue Baptist Church. Appreciate all the trustees who joined us, I know the board president was stuck in a airport, but the board vice president was there, trustee Dupuy and his lovely family, trustee Manning, we had a good visit, so I appreciate the staff that went with us as well.
All right, any other announcements from the dais? Hearing no objections, eight twenty, we'll stand adjourned.